Welcome, everyone, to the May 28th City Council Work Session. Today, we're talking about Envision Eugene Implementation. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Heather to take us through a presentation.
Good afternoon. Heather O'Donnell with the City of Eugene Planning Division. Today, we want to give you an update on the residential redesignation package that you'll be considering next week at the June 3 public hearing. So regarding the update, we want to give you a little bit of context about how the residential redesignation fits into Envision Eugene, what the study areas are that we're considering for redesignation, and what we've heard about those study areas. And then secondarily, we want to discuss the option for council to make a motion to accept new evidence at the public hearing. It's kind of a procedural issue we want you to address. And then we'll talk about the project's next steps. So regarding the project update, as you know, in March 2012, the Envision Eugene recommendation for how we would grow for the next 20 years was issued. And this, the foundation for this document included, was really the seven pillars or goals of Envision Eugene. And the three that are most relevant, although these redesignations touch on a lot of these pillars, are providing housing affordability for all income levels, promote compact urban development and efficient transportation options, and protect, repair, and enhance neighborhood livability. To implement these pillars, there are strategies and actions that are included in the Envision Eugene recommendation. And in June of 2012, the city council initiated the redesignation strategies, which we'll be talking about today. So redesignation, residential redesignation package that we're talking about is one of the main strategies to help us accommodate our housing demand for the next 20 years. When we talk about redesignation, what we're talking about is changing the planned use of the property to another use. So changing the metro plan designation of the property to a different metro plan designation than it's currently designated. Any amount of redesignation that doesn't go through, we would then be planning for that, the housing that would have occurred through the redesignation, to occur in urban growth boundary expansion. So there's five sites that we're looking at around the city. Three of them were in the draft recommendation in 2012, and those are, see if I can get my pointer here, Crow Road in West Eugene, Gillum Road in North Eugene, and the former Naval Reserve Site near downtown. There are two sites that have been added since the draft recommendation came out in 2012, and that's the Irving Road, former Eagles Lodge property, and the Willamette Street Rest Haven Site in South Eugene. And then two of the sites that we're considering are, include areas that are not annexed. And because of that, any metro plan changes in unannexed areas also have to be approved by the county for those to go through. And so that's why the hearing on June 3 is a joint hearing. The redesignation sites that you're seeing, that we're bringing before you on June 3, are an opportunity not just to help address our housing deficit or our demand for the next 20 years, but they also are, were specifically selected because they were sites that would help us meet other planning goals that we have. So for instance, Crow, whoops, excuse me, wrong button, Crow Road and Gillum Road are both medium, planned for medium-density residential. They're kind of on the edges of town. And so if we redesignate some of those areas to lower-density housing, we would be shifting, we'd be reducing the amount of vehicle trips from those areas. Irving Road, Eagles, and Willamette Street Rest Haven, those are both examples of sites that are designated as parks and open space, but they're privately owned. And so it's pretty limited what the property owner can do with those properties when they don't want to do parks and open space type uses on the property anymore. And then the fifth site, the former Naval Reserve Site, that's an opportunity to prepare a site for affordable housing in the future. So different planning goals that we're, that we're also trying to meet in addition to accommodating our housing demand. So we've had various amounts of public engagement on all of these sites. The first thing I want to make sure I point out to you is that the proposed redesignations that we're bringing forward to you on June 3 represent working with willing property owners. That's been the goal from the beginning. So anytime that we've received feedback from property owners about how they want their property to be designated, we have, that is reflected in the proposal that you'll see next week and here. So early input to find out what property owners wanted for their properties were a combination of methods. We used, sent out letters, we did workshops, held meetings, provided some questionnaires, and importantly, just individual phone calls, emails, and meetings with property owners and adjacent residences for each site at the level that was appropriate for the proposal. So the first site that we'll talk about is Crow Road. This is our biggest site that we're proposing for redesignation. It's kind of hard to see, but this is in West Eugene, and this yellow line here is the urban growth boundary, Green Hill Road, West 11th. You can see the grayed-out areas are areas that are in the city limits. So most of the Crow Road study area is not annexed, but again, is within the urban growth boundary. It's about 277 acres, about 50 tax lots, and it's currently planned on the metro plan for medium-density residential, but zoned for R1 low-density residential. In this case, you know, there's a little bit of history here that's helpful. Back in the 80s, you know, this is a pretty large area for medium density, for all medium-density residential housing. Back in the 80s, I think the thought was that this would be a denser housing center that would help support the employment center to the north of West 11th, and then also over by Heinecks in that area. Then in the 90s, we worked on the West Eugene Wetlands Plan, and that identified a number of resources, particularly in the employment area, that are significant and should be protected. And so they're protected now, and so while we're assuming a lot of additional jobs in this area, it's not as many as we thought back in the 80s. And so looking at a different plan for this property presents an opportunity not only to right-size the amount of housing that's really needed in this area, but also to plan for more of a mixture of housing types and affordability. It also provides an opportunity, like I mentioned earlier, to reduce the amount of vehicle trips that would occur from, from this area. So the proposal is to, again, it's currently all medium-density residential and zoned R1. So the proposal is to redesignate a large portion of it to low-density residential, and that would match the current R1 zoning, and that would get us about 560 low-density homes. We would keep some of the orange, we would keep some of the medium-density residential designation, and then upzone those areas to R2, which is the matching zone for that planned designation. And then we would add a commercial designation in this area that could be available for commercial or for multifamily, because you can do either in commercial designations. We would keep the R1 zone at this time, but when the property's ready to redevelop, then they could go to C2, which is our matching community commercial zone for this property. What this represents mostly is that, what you're seeing is most of the commercial and apartment area are located kind of on the flatter portions of the study area and closer to West 11th and transit areas. And then it gets into low-density as it goes into the south hills here. This one property that you're seeing right here, I mentioned that this is the most up-to-date information that we've received from property owners about how they want to use their property. This property owner gave testimony at the Planning Commission proceedings that they wanted to stay medium-density residential. So we changed the proposal, and that's reflected here to stay medium-density residential. This plan, so this would result in metro plan changes, zone changes, and then corresponding changes to the neighborhood plan for the area, which is the Willow Creek Special Area Study, as well as some code changes. The Planning Commission looked at this proposal, and they recommended unanimously to recommend approval of this proposal, seven to one. Sorry, seven to zero is unanimous. And then, you know, I mentioned we did varying levels of involvement for the different sites. For Crow Road, it's such a large area that we actually did, we worked on kind of a draft concept plan for how the area might develop in the future. What we heard from residents in the area is that they really love kind of the rural characteristics of their neighborhood. And so we worked on kind of what we're calling an urban-rural edge concept plan for the area. That included things like trying to make it easier to do clustered housing so that you can do agriculture, you can still do agricultural uses in the area, but still get the density as it develops. Possibly look at rural building design standards for the area, and then possibly different tree preservation standards. And so what we heard about that was general support at a high level about those concepts, but they really haven't been flushed out enough at this point for us to actually adopt them into the code. And so what we're proposing is not adopting those standards now, but amending the Willow Creek Special Area Study to include enabling language that will enable us to continue that work with the property owners out there so that we can come up with some code amendments that work for them, as well as allow that area to develop reasonably in the future. So the second site is the Gillum Road property. This is in North Eugene, and it is, this is Ayers Road and Gillum Road, and this is the site here. It's about 10 acres. It is annexed. It is currently planned for medium-density residential, and it's zoned with R2 and a little bit of C1, which is neighborhood commercial zoning. We are proposing to redesignate the whole site to low-density residential and rezone it to the matching R1 zone, and that would get us a capacity for about 38 low-density residential homes. The property owner is supportive of low-density residential. Adjacent property owners are supportive of low-density residential, and the Planning Commission recommended unanimously six-zero to support the recommendation as well. Irving Road Eagles Site, this site is north of Belt Line, and it is, this is Irving Road right here. This is Northwest Expressway. It's about 17 acres. It's kind of hard to see the boundary here, but this is the boundary. It is outside, it's not annexed at the moment, but you can see the city limits are right adjacent to it. It is currently planned as parks and open space, but the zoning is R1. So that worked fine, that when you have that combination, it kind of limits what you can do with the property. That worked fine for the previous property owners, which were the Eagles Lodge, and you can actually see the lodge here. So they were using it for the lodge, and then they were using the rest of the site as a golf course. So that, that makes sense. But since then, things have changed. The property has been sold to West Side Baptist Church recently, and what they would like to do is not use the entire property for parks and open space uses. So you can see the approximate acreages we're assuming up here is, they would keep almost half, about seven acres, for church uses. They're working with our parks and open space staff, who would like to acquire about two acres of the site for a neighborhood park. And then they would like to sell off the remainder that they don't need for their uses anymore for low-density residential housing. And so on those about eight acres, we're estimating a capacity of about 32 low-density residential homes. So we would redesignate it to low-density residential, and that would match the existing zoning of R1. So this is just a metro plan change and a corresponding change to the River Road Santa Clara Urban Facilities Plan. So what we've heard on this site is the property owner does want to go to low-density residential. The neighbors' input that we've heard is, some people are supportive of housing on the site. Some people have expressed concern about a loss of open space land in the area, and, you know, like I mentioned, we are working with our park staff to hopefully acquire a couple acres for a neighborhood park. We've heard concerns about traffic, which we do look at, at a high level as part of the redesignation effort going on right now. And then we've heard kind of general questions or concerns about how the property would actually be developed. We think that those concerns are things that would be addressed at the time that a development plan's actually submitted, which is not the stage that we're at right now. So the question is really, does the site make sense for housing or not? And the Planning Commission vote on this, the Eugene Planning Commission, was also unanimous, seven to zero, to recommend approval. So similarly, this is the Willamette Street Rest Haven Cemetery property. This is in South Eugene, and this is Willamette Street. This is 39th and 40th across the street. This property is about 75 acres. It makes up two tax lots, this large one, and there's a smaller one in the corner here. The property is designated or planned for parks and open space, and it is split zoned. So it's zoned public land, PL, basically north of 40th, and then generally south of 40th, it's zoned R1. Excuse me. And so in this case, we understand also from the property owner that they don't need the whole site for parks and open space type uses. So approximate acreages of what we're assuming for future development of the site would be about 30 acres would be cemetery uses, and about 45 acres for low-density residential. There is currently an application on the property for a cell tower up in this area. So we are proposing for the site, based on that, to go to low-density residential metro plan designation, and then rezoning the portion that's public land to R1. So the whole site would be low-density residentially designated and R1 zoned, you know, because it's in private ownership. So what we've heard on this site is, as I mentioned, the property owner does anticipate housing on the southern portion of the site, middle and southern. They're in favor, generally in favor of the redesignation with no additional restrictions attached to that. We've had a lot of neighborhood input on this. Similar to Irving Road, there's a general concern for loss of open space. And similar to Irving Road, Irving Road, there is a portion of the property that will be staying as cemetery, so it's about 30 acres. Also heard concerns about traffic, which again, we are looking at, at kind of a high level as part of the redesignation process. But the most comments that we heard are just general concerns about how development will or won't occur on the southern-sloped portion of the property. And so, yeah, and so that's, let's see, kind of in this area here, trade southern portion of the property.
Which way is it sloping?
It is sloping south. So there's kind of a knoll right here, and then it slopes this way. And so that last point is really what the Planning Commission vote there represents, is that three of the Planning Commissioners voted to recommend approval of the redesignation and rezone, and three of the Planning Commissioners felt like, as part of the redesignation and rezoning, that we needed to add some sort of policy or overlay zone that would get at those issues about development on the southern slope now, rather than waiting till later.
What were the issues?
The concerns, they're, just to summarize, because we have gotten a lot of testimony about them. Because it's sloped, there's concerns about erosion, there's concerns about tree removal, there is a stream that cuts kind of across the corner here, so there's concerns about impacts to that. So I think that kind of summarizes it at a high level. And then the last site is the former Naval Reserve Site. This property, for those of you that don't know, is on 13th and Chambers. It's about three acres, and this is the site here. It's currently vacant. It is annexed. The city owns the property, and the intent is to use it for affordable housing in the future, housing that would be similar to Wilkenzy Crossing or Stellar Apartments, kind of at that scale. The property is designated government and education and is zoned PL, public land. And so the proposal is to redesignate it to medium-density residential and rezone it to the matching R2 zone. And so that, you know, an estimated capacity is about 35 homes is what we're assuming for our growth planning. What we've heard on this site is, as I mentioned, it is city-owned, and we know we're planning for affordable housing here. So we did take this through the Housing Policy Board, who did recommend the site as suitable for affordable housing. The neighborhood input that we've received from adjacent property owners, we've heard support for apartments and support for well-managed, affordable housing. And then from the neighborhood organization, we have heard a request for a specific land use process that would work on establishing a planning team and developing site-specific refinement plan policies for this site prior to redesignation. The Eugene Planning Commission voted five to one to approve the redesignation and rezone. And at this point, you know, we recognize that this property, we're not actually ready to start developing this property at this point, and so we're proposing to postpone redesignation to a later date. We'll come back to you with redesignation, and so unless you direct us otherwise today, we would not make this part of the public hearing next week. And we'll, we'll set a different time to come back to you to discuss redesignating it. So based on that, this slide shows you a summary of the four sites that we're proposing for redesignation, and you can see they're mostly focused on helping to accommodate our low-density residential demand. So those estimates that you're seeing there, we, I talked about those earlier, that's the total estimated capacity for low-density residential. I always have to say, this is an estimate based on citywide averages, it's not a projection or, or the minimum or maximum that would be allowed on these sites. But it is, it does give you a good idea of what we might see out there. So since we're mostly focusing now on our low-density residential demand, we wanted to kind of show you how this would fit into the puzzle. So we are estimating a demand for about 8,700 low-density residential homes that we need for the next 20 years of growth. The 7,500 homes are the amount of homes that, which is about 85% of that demand, can fit inside the current urban growth boundary if we don't take any action. And so that means taking into account all of our vacant land, all of our underdeveloped or what we call partially vacant land, and counting the capacity on those, we, we have about 85% of that demand met. But what that means is there's about 1,200 low-density residential homes that we need to take some sort of action to accommodate, because we need to accommodate those in the next 20 years. And the way to accommodate your deficit is that you either do land use efficiency strategies or an urban growth boundary expansion, or a combination of the two. And so land use efficiency strategies are really new actions you can take. So they're a new program, they're changing your code, land use code, or they're redesignating and rezoning property to get housing on them that wouldn't have otherwise happened. And so at this point, you see that 733 up here in the pie of the deficit. Redesignation is our biggest strategy for accommodating that deficit. The only other efficiency measures that you've been talking about are alley access lots and secondary dwelling units. And so any amount of the redesignation that is proposed that doesn't happen, that would then be accommodated through an urban growth boundary expansion. So now I'm going to shift gears for a second and talk about that other item, which is the request for council to make a motion, take action today, that would allow new evidence on the redesignation proposal to be submitted at the public hearing. So the reason we're doing this is because the land use code sets out different procedures for different types of land use applications, and in this case, we've got the gamut, right? We're doing redesignation, rezoning, code amendments, et cetera. And so the metro plan amendment procedures don't allow new evidence to be submitted at city council, but they do allow for the council to decide to do a different process if they want to. Code amendments do allow new evidence to be submitted. And so we're recommending that council act to accept new evidence that would clear that conflict up. And it also allow, it would then allow for consideration of evidence that hasn't been raised, or that was, that would be raised after the Planning Commission process. And it also allows for the most opportunity for public input. And so we, you know, we have a number of sites that we're looking at here. There's a lot proposed, and so this really gives us the most opportunity for public feedback. So the next steps are, as I've mentioned, next week, we've got a joint hearing with the Board of County Commissioners at 7:00. Then following that, in July, the Board of County Commissioners are scheduled to deliberate an act, and then city council, the same thing separately on July 9th and July 14th, if necessary. And then at the bottom, you have my contact information, and as well, there is a webpage that we've set up for folks that want more detail. So thank you.
Mike, you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much. I have several, actually, or a couple. Let's start with that. 102 new units on, at the Rest Haven location. Do you have standard sorts of transportation criteria, sort of information you would assign and say, with each new dwelling unit comes X number of new vehicles? Do you have a standard that you apply when calculating with transportation policy?
Yeah, it depends on the, the planned designation of the property. It's different for apartments than it is for low-density residential.
So with that 102 new units, about how many cars per unit?
I will have to look at that specifically. I will have to look at that specifically. I think it's, I think it's ten trips per unit at the PM peak hour.
Okay. So what, my point of saying that is, I wish we'd have had more conversation around our decision last night with regard to what we're adding over the coming years with traffic to Wallamette Street, because I, I think we kind of considered some of our decisions and our processes disjointed, in a disjointed way with this. Secondly, with the Naval Reserve Site at Thirteenth, you mentioned coming back later. Later, when?
Um, we haven't set a specific time yet. We wanted to see if the council was agreeable to that.
So later being before we would deal with a final approval of Invision Eugene, or after?
Not necessarily, no. I believe that currently, our affordable housing staff are working on projects that will take them over the next couple of years. And so really, we won't be turning our attention to the Naval Reserve Site for two to three years. And so our proposal would be to come back before that time, when the affordable housing project was a little bit more ripe.
What's the impact on Invision Eugene with us not acting to change that in any way?
It's thirty-five multi-unit, multifamily units.
That won't be calculated in if we don't do so beforehand?
Correct.
Okay. I would like to say with that site, that I would really encourage us to both work closely with the Principal Caesar Chavez there, as well as the Neighborhood Association. I know, I've heard they've already done a great deal of work there. Speaking as a representative of the folks in North Eugene, I would really like to see us avoid another Bascom Village-type situation. And with the Bascom Village case, that was land that was set aside for a very long time, and certainly it's the case that property owners could have, if they'd done an extraordinary job, known that that, what that land was set aside for. In this case, that's, that's not true. That's not what it's been set aside for, for a long time. And so I would think we would want to do even more Goal One, extra work, to try and involve the nearby neighbors if we're going to use that site for that purpose. Lastly, the, can you tell me how many acres the city owns of undeveloped land above Laurelwood Golf Course?
Um, not off the top of my head, but...
Can you tell me what you think it is, more or less?
Are you talking about parkland, or?
Well, that's where I was going to go with this. My understanding is, I once heard forty-three acres, and then somebody else told me it was closer to fifty acres, that the city owns above Laurelwood that's undeveloped.
So not the golf course itself?
Not the golf course itself, but the stuff they're going to use for the other nine, that never was developed. You don't know how many acres that is? So you can't probably tell me what it's zoned. My question is, why aren't, if that is in position to potentially be rezoned for this purpose, to add to our housing mix, why aren't we, if it's necessary? And I would really like to have somebody send me a memo back, and tell me, how many acres is it? How's it currently zoned? If it's already R1, which I think somebody mentioned to me it is, I want to know, is that part of our calculations? And what is it currently zoned, and what's the use? But if it's not, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. In reference to the property at the Marine Reserve Center, thank you very much. It was the Marine Naval Center.
Technically, sure.
Have we done any kind of casting out to see if there's any interest in any of the local organizations that, that specialize in affordable housing? To see if there's interest now in, in building that? Because something tells me we definitely need more affordable housing in this community. So if, if the interest is there, I, I myself don't see a need to postpone the re-designation of that property. In fact, I'd like to see that kind of get fast-tracked and send out RFQs so they can get started, because it's not an overnight process to, to have one of these developments built. So I, I would just like to see maybe that move forward now, instead of wait till a later date.
Stephanie Jennings is here from the Affordable Housing Program, and she can speak to the timeline, if that'd be helpful.
So for that particular site, so it's been discussed as a potential site for affordable housing for many years, and so we still, we don't have specific direction from council to make it an affordable housing site. We discussed it at the Housing Policy Board meeting in January, and Housing Policy Board unanimously supported it as a site for future affordable housing development. And we also heard from providers at that meeting, that they all found it to be a suitable site for future affordable housing development as well. Part of what the sort of backlog is that we are dealing with right now with low-income housing, relates to the state's low-income housing tax credit allocation process. And we have multiple projects in the Eugene-Springfield area that have an interest in that particular pot of resources. So we try to make sure that we don't have a lot of projects waiting, because if you go through the RFP process, we're asking developers to submit proposals based on a certain set of market conditions. At that point in time, we're bringing forward a proposal to council for a certain amount of subsidy. If you then have to wait two years to submit to the state, a lot of those market conditions can change fairly significantly, and also the state's priorities can change. So we try not to kind of have too much of a separation between when we do our local RFP, and when the site can actually go into the state's process for tax credit funding. Does that answer your question?
No, I just, you know, I, I look at some of the other property that, that we have land-banked for many, many years, and I just think that, at this point in time, to move forward with the re-designation to, of that, of that property, I think would be a time-saver. And since we're doing all the work anyway, why create extra work for staff at a later time? So I, I'm all in favor of moving forward with the re-designation. And like Mike, I, I strongly suggest that we work with the neighborhood associations and the, the school district in any development or planning involving that piece of property.
Just to follow up on that topic, you wouldn't necessarily have to be putting out asks of people to develop it, you could, but it could be, council could make the decision separate from that, to designate it as a, for future affordable housing. So you could take the step in a direction that you're, I think that's correct. So you could take, you could take the step in the direction you want to go, and then wait in the queue for the right time, for, when they can put all the resources together, right?
Yes, that's correct. And typically, what we do with properties, when they're in the land bank, that allows us time to go through any pre-development issues, if there's any kind of environmental issues, to do that pre-work with the surrounding community as, in preparation for development of the RFP process. Even with those sort of factors in consideration, if council were to decide you wanted to delay a year, that wouldn't affect us significantly, but I think it's, it's up to you in terms of which direction you'd like to go in.
So I'm, I've got Claire and Alan and George Brown in the queue, and Mike in the second round. I did want to just say that I, I think it's kind of helpful for people to hear this council's interested, if they are, in it being used for that purpose, because then it takes it off the list of people thinking it can be used for other purposes. So just a, I think you could consider.
Thank you, yeah. I have the same inclination as Councilor Pauling, that I, I don't quite understand the logic of postponing the re-designation of that spot, if in fact, the majority of council thinks it should be rezoned for assumed use of affordable housing. And it seems to me that it fits many of the parameters of what we'd want to see in a site like that. So I would actually like to provide that direction, to designate it as such. I don't know if that requires a motion. But I will so move, that we move forward on the re-designation of the West Thirteenth Marine Naval, Naval Reserve Site to, from government and education to medium-density residential.
So before we move with your motion, I'd just like to hear if there's any issues around that, because that may affect whether you deal with it today or at a future meeting. I just want to...
Do I have a second, though? Okay.
I just want to make sure I understand the full intent of the motion. Is it just to deal with having this site be part of the re-designation process? Or is it to also give, what I heard a couple of you say, that, in essence, the, the direction to the manager, that this site should be developed for affordable housing?
It seems to me that there's a two-step process. So my motion was just to address the technicality of the re-designation, and not the assumed use of affordable housing. We can deal with that in a separate motion.
Okay. So that, that would mean that the property, if re-designated, if what you're trying to do is explain to the public at large that your intent behind this is to use it for affordable housing, in reality, if you re-designate it, you can't re-designate it for affordable housing, you're re-designating it for medium-density residential, which then can be used for any type of medium-density residential.
Right, I, I recognize that. So I think the wording of my language didn't, shouldn't have said affordable housing.
Shouldn't you do it backward, the other way around?
Yeah, I'm wondering if you want to decide that you want to use it for affordable housing first, and then...
Yeah.
And one of the things we could do is come back with a work session around what is, how do you get to affordable housing designation, if that's important, or is it just a...
So can I ask staff? I didn't quite understand the logic of the recommendation to postpone, so maybe if you could speak to that a little further.
Uh, it's, it's really twofold. One was because the timing wasn't quite right for the affordable housing, but the other was recognizing that the Neighborhood Association did have some concerns and wanted a more extensive process than what we had provided. They wanted a specific refinement planning process, and, which is not something that we can do in this current timeline that we have. And so we were suggesting postponing it to another time.
Pulled off for a work session?
Because it's not an urgent issue for affordable housing anyhow.
Can I have discussion?
Waiting to see what she's going to do.
Yeah, sorry. So, well, it's, it seems to me that there's, you know, some support here for looking at this again. So I don't want to rush the process if there's other due diligence to be done. And I would be fine with withdrawing my motion and postponing, you know, having a work session to talk about the property. But I agree with what Councilor Pauling was saying, and the mayor, that, you know, broadcasting to the community that we have this intention for this use of this property sooner, rather than later, if in fact, that's what we all agree on, I think would be beneficial.
Why don't you change it to ask for a work session?
Okay. I will modify my motion to request a work session to discuss the property at West Thirteenth and the Marine Naval Reserve Center.
What a good idea.
You're second?
Yes.
Moved in second, in discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I mentioned earlier was working with the Principal Caesar Chavez, and working with the Neighborhood Association. I, I understand their request for a refinement plan. I'm not, let me clarify my comments around the Bascom Village issue. I would hate to see us say, we all think that ought to be such and such, in direct opposition to what the Neighborhood Association and folks in that area would like to see, especially since they bought their properties first. And this had, they did it without the understanding that this would be the case. So I'm going to want to, I want to probably defer to their sentiment on this matter more strongly so. And I would think we would absolutely want to get information back in this work session about what would that refinement plan that they've asked for require of us? And what would that dictate in terms of its use after the fact? So what, if they, if we get a refinement plan like they asked for, how long would that take? What would it cost? What would it likely mean as an outcome?
One of the things, and this is partly why we're wanting to postpone part of this conversation, we can do that, that just takes work on the same people that are actually trying to move through and implement Invision Eugene. And so part of our concern, and my concern, is, yes, we absolutely want to have this entire conversation, but we're, this particular piece of property at this time isn't on the critical path towards Invision Eugene. And so it can sort of slip off of that. We can come back to this whole conversation about neighborhood use versus affordable housing, versus how's it actually get designated, and we can have a much fuller conversation, and it doesn't impact the, the timeline for Invision Eugene. So that's, that's why we're, because there are neighborhood issues, there's affordability issues, affordable housing issues, which is why we wanted to take it off of this path, postpone that until it's a more timely conversation. So that's why we're suggesting that we do that, so we're not spending our time on this, rather than the implementation piece.
And also, as the last couple minutes here, what would be the impact of a neighborhood appeal on Invision Eugene process if we did this? If we brought this in as part of that?
Yeah, I've got Alan and George Brown, you were in the queue before.
Later.
Yeah, I guess, Mike, you answered my, part of my question, which was, is this critical path? The answer's no, and so if we did start to embark on this process, then there's other things that we wouldn't be doing, because we'd be doing this. And the other things that we'd be doing, wouldn't be doing are pushing the Eugene...
Are the critical path elements for Invision Eugene.
Right. So what if we, what if we just took a straw poll of the council, that's, of people interested in pursuing this as an affordable housing site, and then putting that off, so people can get a sense of where the council's at? But it's not a binding sense, so the, the straw poll would essentially be asking people if they're, if they're interested in having a discussion about it.
Did you have anything that you wanted to say?
As opposed to scheduling a work session?
So...
I don't know what that means.
Are you interested in having, having the city discuss this being an affordable housing land-bank site?
Without the neighbors?
No, no. We would have a discussion about it. But it kind of gives a sense to the neighbors, you know, that this is on the table.
A work session?
Well, we're not going to schedule a work session in the next three years, probably.
Well, we can do sooner than three years, so I'm not suggesting it for three years, but I, but I do think...
It's on the table to have a work session.
Yeah. It doesn't have a timeline on it, but...
Right, so if, if you could say yes, and that there's no timeline, and recognize that it's not going to be any time in the near future, we can live with that, it'll just kind of sit out there.
Yeah.
And it will, and it probably, it will be into the new calendar year, so we can really get through all of Invision Eugene. So that's really, we're looking back into that kind of a timeline to actually start having the conversation about that. So if you're okay with that, then the work session works great for us, maybe that sends the message, and we'll just schedule it at the right time that kind of fits.
That works for me.
George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a copy of a letter here that might be helpful for what we're talking about right now. This is from Richard Herman, Executive Director of Metropolitan Affordable Housing. It was written last, well, it's changed, yes, but at, at the time, that's what it was. This is from last November, 2013, and it is to the Eugene and Lane County Joint Planning Commission, as part of its public testimony. I'd just like to read a couple quotes. "I'm speaking in support of the re-designation of the former Naval Reserve Site for more multifamily housing, and specifically for this site becoming part of the city of Eugene's land-bank program for future affordable housing. I'm also speaking in support of working closely and early on with Jefferson Westside Neighbors Association. I know from conversations I've had with them over the past few years, this has been a subject of discussion in the neighborhood for several years, with the Jefferson Westside Neighborhood Association, and affordable housing providers." So it's not a new, they welcome it, they, they want that to happen, and that's why they really need to be included, I feel, in, in the future discussions about this, and we really need to, to listen to them, because they've been working on it for quite a while, in, in some detail. And finally, "I would encourage the Planning Commission to leverage the commitment and interest of the Jefferson Westside Neighbors in participating in the process of creating a quality development on the former Naval Reserve Site that will serve as a long-term asset to the neighborhood and our community." And that's, that's the final quote. So, yeah, I don't know that we need to rush this today and get this on, you know, I, I think it's okay, the suggestion to kind of... it's okay, the suggestion to kind of keep it separate from the other ones, until we, you know, can have this, this broader conversation. But hopefully, not put it off too long either, though. Well, that's, that's all I'm going to say about that. But I have a question, and I got a little time left. I think I have enough time. My question is, if we go back to, say, page five, well, I, I guess I just had a general question about specifically the Crow Roads and the Gillum Road, of changing, what is the idea behind changing, or the rationale for changing medium-density residential to low-density residential? And why would we want to do that? Because we want to...
On the Crow Road site?
...get some capacity at all these sites. Why would we purposely, you know, like...
Well, one of the strategies of Invision Eugene is to accommodate as much of our single-family housing inside the urban growth boundary as possible, so to minimize urban growth boundary expansion for single-family. And so, this does give us additional capacity for single-family homes, which in turn gives us a smaller urban growth boundary expansion. Another, another goal of Invision Eugene is to locate our multifamily housing along transit corridors and closer to the core, to just reduce VMT and, and provide greater service, access to services for folks living in multifamily. So this really accomplishes both of those goals.
Well, I, I guess I don't understand that, because my que, I mean, I don't understand how you have medium-density residential, and then you change that to low-density residential. I don't understand how that expands capacity. It seems to me like it shrinks capacity.
It, it's, yeah, it's counterintuitive. The reason is, is because when you just do our initial kind of bean-counting exercise of where vacant or partially vacant land is by plan designation, what we end up with is a deficit for low-density residential housing. So we don't have enough land for low-density residential. But we have a surplus of medium-density residential. And so, what this does is kind of right sizes those scales. It balances out those scales. And that's something we've kind of been advised, that if you have a surplus in one land category and a deficit in another, you really should be looking at whether or not you need to change some of those plan designations.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wondered, just as a process question, with my request for information, if this passes, was that sufficient that you will be bringing that back? Or do I need to make that as part of the motion, to make sure that that's part of the discussion?
What I would suggest is, at the time that a work session is scheduled leading into that, we would then come back and ask for what information people need for that. We wouldn't be providing that information now if the work session is going to be months from now.
I meant when we have the work session.
Yes.
You'll be providing that, when we have, you feel like my asking is enough for you to want to bring that back when we have the report session? Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Whenever that is.
Yeah, but we'll also probably come back and ask if there's additional information, because it'll, there'll be some time between it. So between now and then, people may have other information requests, so...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't have to make that as part of the vote, in order to make sure we get...
Okay.
So you have a motion on the table, which is Claire's motion. There's also a motion that we're asking you to consider about new evidence, which is, if you're going to do it, it's critical that you do it today.
Yeah. Gotcha.
It's a time of bleeding, yes.
So I'm, I'm fine, presumably, this motion will pass. I, I'm fine understanding that it may be a year out before we revisit this. But for me, it's a little more definitive than, yeah, well, sometime we'll come back to you on this.
Alan?
Well, I was actually in the queue for stuff not related to this motion. But we're not doing that.
Got each of this motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Would this be just to discuss this for affordable housing or subsidized housing? Or would it be to discuss the use of the land?
A larger question is what it is.
I'm willing to discuss use of the land, but not to limit it to subsidized housing.
Right. But that's fine with us. I think what, well, I don't know what everybody else heard. What I heard is the conversation that affordable housing is important, is part of that conversation, but there may be some other interests out there about the use of the property. That's where really your questions are. And that, that would be part of the conversation. That's what I heard. And so, I don't know if that's what the motion intends.
I don't think it's the language that she used in her motion.
Well, my motion was to have a work session about the redesignation of the property.
Okay.
Right, that was the new motion.
That's fine.
All right, that's covered everything.
I can vote for that.
That could bleed into...
It's broad, right.
Other land uses.
Any redesignation.
All right, we're going to vote on that. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, it passes. Yes, and you want your...
I still have a question.
Okay.
An old queue, which isn't related to this. On, on page eight, which is a pie, pie chart of LDR demand. So there's still 505 units of LDR remaining that can either be done through efficiency or EGB expansion. So if we did it solely through EGB expansion, how many acres would that be? What's the metric units per acre that we're using in Invision Eugene to figure that out?
It really depends on the area that you would go into expansion. So some areas are more hilly and have natural resources that would require a larger expansion area than maybe a flatter area with less natural resources. So the acreage is going to depend. You know, I think we were seeing, you know, capacity around two to 2.5 homes per acre on the low end in some of the steady areas. And in some areas, it, it could be a little bit higher.
Yeah, because I just did a map on the page before that. It's between four and 1.4 units per acre.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, okay. So what's the aver, what are you guys using when you talk about typically?
Oh, yeah. So we, we have a matrix, and it's based on the size of the lot and the slope of the lot. And then, and then depending on those things, then you apply a certain density. So in the South Hills, we're using about 2.5 homes per acre. The citywide average, if I didn't know what the slope or the size of the property was that we would use, it would be four. And so, when I say the steady areas that we're looking at, council directed us to look at a couple of areas for expansion back in June. These, they're not these areas. They're the Dag Trust property, you know, some of those areas, and that's where we're seeing the...
They're using four, 505 units?
Would be too much, probably. Because the areas that we're studying are more hilly, so it's probably, I would use 2.5, if you wanted to just estimate.
200 acres.
Yeah.
I move to allow hearing participants to offer new evidence on the residential redesignation amendment package at the City Council public hearing.
Second?
Moved in seconded. Ready to vote on that? All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, passes. So run what we need to do, right? Yep. All right. Thanks, everybody.